Let's go ahead and open the session with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Stan?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Hopefully, everybody got here today through the snow and slush and rain. First item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda, and we do have one change. When we get to the motion on personnel recommendations, I've got three additional recommendations that I'll read into that motion as we get through to that. Does anybody have anything else they'd like to change on the agenda? If not, I'll take a motion.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Go call.
Motion by Anderson, second by Munda. Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Walz?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Munda?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
I have seven yeses. Motion carries.
Okay. Next item is recognitions. Dr. Allgram?
Good evening, everyone. I didn't have this on the agenda because we've been working on this up until the last minute, but I did want to make sure that people that were here realize that we've got a special recognition tonight. We're paying tribute to the Boards of Education, not just this Board of Education, but to the Boards of Education of Warren Township High School. In 1917, a committee consisting of Nay Lamb, RB Dixon, Hery Flood, NH Brown, George McCullough, and Mr. Metcalf developed a plan of establishing a secondary or high school. As many of you know, last year, we were fortunate enough to be celebrating our centennial, and one of the special missions of our homework last year was to do some work on the 100 Boards of Education at the time and what was the 85 individual Board of Education members who've offered their time, talents, and energies towards establishing, developing, and maintaining a public high school for the children in our community. Board members spend hundreds of hours at meetings considering recommendations and proposals to establish a top-rated high school, listening to the citizens of this great community, working at school events, and finally making decisions to offer the best possible staff, curriculum, and activities for our Blue Devils. More than 30,000 graduates later, WTHS continues to be a focus of pride for the community. Board members volunteer endless hours to serve the community without much public appreciation, and at the very least, we wanted to create a lasting piece of art and memory, a wall display, which is currently in the Board of Education meeting room. This piece is using materials, if you notice, kind of from the past and the present and hopefully the future, representing the history of excellence and bright future for our Blue Devils. I want to, right now, just so identify the many people who helped get this project together. So first off, Gene Love and Chris Waldron, back a year ago and into this year, did a lot of homework in researching out who were those Board of Ed members and doing our best to extract those names. Keith Stocker and Rocco Odo for their artistic design through the entire project, as well as they helped out in last year's centennial work. John Van Pei, Jose Zires, Tom Hensy, and Mike Greenberg for their wood design, woodworking, installation of the piece. And we also got some help from American Outfitters, Brogans, and Image 360 for the actual different pieces within the design. So if everybody can see, ultimately, what we tried to do is bring together the past and obviously our current mission statement. There's materials representing the past and future, and on each one of those little plaques is actually the names of those Board of Education members for each of our, what was 100, now this is our 101, 101st Board of Education, and it really is to celebrate the contributions that Board members make in all communities, but especially, obviously, here at WTHS for their time and energy. So before we recognize our Board, those people that I wanted to say thank you to, a lot of whom are in the room, can we give them a round of applause? And back in November each year, I try to say something. By the way, this was supposed to be, this is a homework assignment that's overdue, right? Because this was, obviously, we had originally hoped to do this as part of the Centennial Gala, now going on a year ago, and then our last deadline date was to make sure we had it done by Board Members' Day in November, and so we're just two months late for that one, so there's no credit being taken off for that. But we did want to make sure that Board members knew we were going to give this in November, how much, not just on that day or in that month, how much we appreciate your leadership at Warren District 121. Could we give our Board members a round of applause? Thank you, Mr. Drake.
Well, thank you. That was very nice. We'll move on to the reception of visitors. I didn't see anybody signed up in the back, but if anybody would like to address the Board, you're more than welcome to do so. Okay. Move on to the President's Report. Announcement of the 2017-2018 Board Meeting Schedule. So in our packet. Identified the schedule for the next school year through June of '18. Any twists or turns to it? We've had to move one in the past because of staying away from Valentine's Day, things like that. I didn't see that in this one at all.
This is pretty much just replicating last year's with the day off.
Okay.
I don't know my birthday's on there. To me, not my birthday.
Next item under the President's Report was one that I added, and so this is something I picked up at the conference, and tonight it'll be just more informational, but what it says here is topics for future meetings. So what I'm trying to do here is give everybody an opportunity to tee up different topics and get them on the agenda for future meetings, an example of which John Anderson would be, you know, you brought up an idea about that Schuler program and building something up. Well, great idea. We haven't really kind of feathered that out since that conversation, but I'd like to keep this as an ongoing line item, and as people, we'll start, it says Board Member Topic for Future Meetings. I don't think we need to restrict it to the Board. It could be faculty members. It could be anybody from the public. We're here to serve the public of the school district, but as people have different things that they'd like to see us talk about, this would be the time to kind of bring those items up, and then we'll do the appropriate preparation and target those for some agenda item for a meeting in the future. So just something that had come up in the training that I attended, I thought it's pretty easy to do, and we'd give it a shot. You guys okay?
Sure.
So would it be something that we would just bring up at the point of impact, or would you rather have us say, like, after tonight, say, hey, can we talk about this at the next meeting?
Like that. So I'd like to talk about the Schuler program. I've got some thoughts. Let's target a future meeting to do that, so we have kind of the proper time to prepare and make sure we do the service to the item. Thank you. Good. Okay. Next item is Committee Reports.
Oh, we did have a safety committee meeting back on December, what was the date there?
Nineteenth.
December 19th, and Mr. Keely, where'd you go? Dr. Keely, can you remind us what was at that meeting?
Yes. Typically, I've done those annually. We've done them at the end of the year. This year, we're trying to be more proactive. I have the means, we would kind of brainstorm amongst all about people who have a vested interest in security, which we obviously all do, but some of them are in our role. So we wanted to look at what current safety plans are, and everyone felt like our current plans were good. One area in which we're weak on, which we want to look further into, is the more proactive approach in perimeter security. I believe Mr. Anderson had the homework assignment. We provide meetings made for consultants so that we can look into getting the consultants out to Warren Township to both campuses to give us an idea of how we can do our perimeter security. I think that was kind of just.
Thanks, Pat.
I'm not ready, so I'm going to be two months late. I just want you to know.
It's better than a year, actually. Sorry, John. Okay. Next item, we're into the Superintendent's Report. John?
A few items for the Board's reading pleasure. We put our monthly reports in for the month of December, so those should have been in your Board packets. Just as a reminder, we had, we did have three FOIAs come in since our last meeting, one from the Parents Foundation, just looking for information on staff contact, one from the Smorons regarding communication with the Smoron family, and one from the Daily Herald regarding drug prevention programming that we have in place. Reminder that we have a few meetings coming up tomorrow evening at 6:00. We have a Diversity Committee meeting in the Almond Library on the 30th of January at 6:30 in the District Board Meeting Room. We'll have our annual Parent/Teacher Advisory Committee meeting. That's an open meeting. We hope to get some staff and some parents, members of our leadership team and Board there just to talk about some potential, looking at some changes for next year in either rules or procedures, and those would obviously then have to make it into our handbook, so that's a pretty important meeting, and that again is on January 30th, 6:30 in the District Office. And then we have an Insurance Committee meeting. It's a little ways off, but we just, we've got it scheduled for February the 21st at 3:30 PM also in the District Office. And Carol, we have a December Treasures Report.
Included in your Board Packet is the Treasures Report for the District and for the Student Activity and Scholarship Funds. We're continuing our monthly budgeting analysis process, so when I compare November to December, we look, our trend is about $181,000 higher in the deficit, about $2.4 million, but of course, I want the Board to be aware that we're using five years of historical trend data, so the trends, the longer period of time that we go out, the more the trends will smooth and we'll have better data. So I really feel by January or February that we'll be able to really use this tool to plan out the last four months of the year, and I, we already see its value in our planning in the District Office. You will see in those reports, we always provide a cash investments report. We always have a dashboard in there that will give you a quick summary. We've got a fund balance report, and then we start with our monthly reports, and we actually drill down by fund, by source of revenue and source of expenses. So for those of you that are very, very curious, that information is broken down by fund. In the narrative to the Treasures Report, we do give a little bit of information on some unfavorable expense variances that we're looking at right now. They compare very closely to last year at this time, so it may be the trending that is causing that variance, and we continue to monitor those, and we'll continue to update you on those from a narrative standpoint. There's also a balance sheet included in the Treasures Report, so again, anybody that's interested in our cash investments, that report is there for you to see. You can see how that compares to fund balance and the difference between the two, and you can drill down in a lot of detail, but we'll have more information as the months go on, but the tool is a very detailed and very informative method of doing the Treasures Report, so we're very pleased on how this turned out. Any questions that I can ask for the Board? Thank you.
We have one, two more reports. Kurt, you ready? All right, we have a solar update, I think.
I'm going to give a, just a one-minute update while he, a 30-second update.
Sounds good.
I'm just going to give a 30-second update for Kurt, because he's going to talk about two topics. He's going to talk about the SREC market and how that has changed, and I've also asked him to talk about solar at the Stern School Road property, and we don't have enough handouts for these, but I'm going to give one to him and Mike and Tom. And John?
I can share with.
This is a, this is a concept I have to add, so we've been talking about, and unfortunately, Mr. Carl seems to be a day. He is a building committee. Did I get the committee wrong?
I'm not on the committee, but I'll be there for you guys.
Okay. He will be there for us, and he is very interested in solar, and so we wanted a few minutes of time to really talk about Stern School Road, but he'll start with the SRECs and how that's changed and hit the Stern School Road for us. So, and I've told him no more than 10 minutes.
Yeah, I can be very quick.
With questions?
Thank you, Carol, and thank you for the Board for having me back again. Happy New Year, everybody. A lot has changed in the last couple months since we spoke in terms of the SREC income. For those that aren't aware, it's the Solar Renewable Energy Credit that is available that will help not only offset the cost of the project, but really fund these projects. And in this case, the IPA found that they have more money available than they thought, and in the public sector, which is what you guys fall into, they have done a bonus program. That's what we're calling it, because basically, they've taken the five-year SREC income, which is how you were going to be paid originally, the 15-year contracts, you have to produce solar for 15 years, and you get front-loaded the first five years, you get all the money. Well, they're taking it as a bonus, they're going to front-load in one year. So that entire five-year term is going to be paid at once, and in your case, you're looking at over $3.6 million of revenue in year one, just from SRECs, doesn't even, and so there was already an incentive to do it, but this is obviously a bigger one. That program is a first-come, first-served, get your name in the queue, go through to do diligence. They may extend it for years. They may do it one or two times, and then we don't know for sure. What we've learned about the SRECs is it changes a lot. We also have the scenario where we have just the regular SRECs, and what that is, is again, it's a 15-year contract. You are front-loaded the first five years, and in that first five years, that equates to over, you know, over 1.6, almost 1.7 million dollars of revenue, which makes your project, again, very positive cash flow, even starting from the beginning. You never dip at any point in the cumulative cash flow. And so with those two new things with SRECs, obviously, it's something that we want to bring forward again. We think there's a real opportunity. We also have done our due diligence even more with structural analysis of the roof and civil analysis of the ground at the campus location, and actually, as of yesterday, they even increased the size of the system. It would be about a two, little over a 2-megawatt system, which would accompany about 73% of your utility bills at this campus would go away. So that's obviously. Here or just? That's here at Almond. So that is the south part of the ground mount, so we're not in the basin where we have to worry about the issues we had with the floodplain or the erosion or anything. This is just the south area. We would put up a little net, too, for, to keep the soccer balls out of there, and then it would be obviously the roof mount, which would help extend the life of the roof after we did a roofing project. Speaking of which, we rebid the roofing work, and our numbers are over 200, about $230,000 cheaper than when we first brought them to you. So we got great numbers, we're very excited where they're at. You're well under $20 a square foot, which for a roof is absolutely outstanding, and so quite happy about that. So you add those two together, we wanted to let you know about that. As far as the Stern School property, we did some designs. What you have in front of you, and I know they got split up, there's actually three different parts, because the program itself doesn't allow you to do over 15 megawatts, and this is close to a 30-megawatt, so we broke it into three different sections. But what you can see is about 30 megawatts of solar just in that one area, and we know you have other space that could be used as well, and Steve and I were talking briefly. At one point, he said there was going to be a large housing development in there. So there's more room, but this is just an idea of what you could do. There are some options that you're going to have with it. There's obviously coming up with funds to build that large of a solar array that would offset all of your costs and all of your electrical needs, and you could sell back to the, you'd even bypass the grid. You'd go straight to, straight to the source, and you'd be a funding. You could offset some of the money and find other partners, other districts or other buildings that, to purchase from you. That's a lot of work, but that is an option. The third option is going through a PPA, which is partnering with another company where we would bring in that would finance the deal. They would set up a term for you in terms of your electrical costs and offsetting your usage completely, and then they would sell off parcels. So you would obviously be able to make money off of the selling or the rental or however the agreement went of the remaining part. They basically administer it, of course. Yeah, so they would front the cost of the program. You would agree to purchase your electricity through them, utilities through them, and then they would find other partners, because you're not going to need nearly the amount that they could put in to offset both campuses and be completely off the grid. So there's still options there. We still have some more work to do in terms of figuring out which direction everyone would like to go, but I did want to make sure that you did know that the SRECs have changed and they are really in your benefit. Really quick, what changed from the original times we were talking was originally, my first mentioned, it was five-year contracts with renewals. The rate and the value of those SRECs was a little bit larger. They since went, they wanted to spread it out more. They dropped the value to about $42 roughly a credit, and that's what we're showing, and that still is a very positive plan. The bonus actually brings the SREC value over $78 a rec. So it's about a 70% increase as a bonus. Now, again, that may last for quite a while, because there's a lot of money available. That may go away pretty quickly. We don't know for sure. We just know whoever is ready to move forward will be able to get that.
Did you update any of the details with the old plane campus?
So I did not update the deals of the old plane campus for two reasons. One, the ground mount really wasn't as viable as we want. When we had to worry about the 500-year flood, basically.
Every other year? Sorry.
Yeah, we, the installation costs of putting in pylons, basically making it a carport system, is really expensive, and you're not going to get the same return that you would want. We just didn't feel it was appropriate at this time. The secondary part was the roofs, but the roofs need a lot of work, and at this point, we thought we were just going to focus here. That is an option, but I do know through other conversations that we had that we weren't looking to do the roofs there yet, where Almond is more than necessary. Old Plain can still last a little bit longer. So future, I think that's a great opportunity, but at this moment, I didn't do, I didn't. You tell me differently, I can, but I didn't.
And parking lot? More expensive to install.
So that's the same problem with the old plane ground mount, because you have to be so high above the ground.
Right.
So we could put a parking structure in, but we don't have enough sunny days that they do out West where it really makes sense, where you need the shade as well. Carports, the angle's only about five, maybe seven degrees. We're not going to get the huge angle like we will on the ground, and we're not going to get the installation costs to where they are even from the roof. Roof installation costs are a lot. That is by far the most inexpensive installation, so we didn't feel that it was going to be the right opportunity.
Cheapest ones are ground mounts, correct?
The cost of ground and roof are pretty similar, but the production becomes a little bit greater with the ground because of the angle of the panels. Yep. You can space them out a little bit more, because typically on ground, you have a little bit more room as well. But the panel production, even from when we first started talking, and we were looking at 325-watt panels, we have 360-watt panels that we have already on hand, ready to go. So we're hearing that 400-watt are right around the corner. So waiting is a good thing in terms of things keep changing, but that, I guess I'm telling you this because solar is moving so quickly, it's hard for even us to keep up.
Questions?
Go ahead, Jim.
On the Stern School location, how much acreage does this?
That is only a fraction of the. You have 100. You have 100. I thought 60 roughly was buildable, and I believe this was, this was using, I get, this was if we decided to move some brush, this would be using about 50, 60, about 75 acres. We'd get you 30 megawatts, give or take a few megawatts here or there. Now, if we didn't move as much brush, sorry. That would be the whole property at that point? Majority of it, but not covering everything, yeah. But the 25 acres might not be worth, not usable anyway, so you basically used the entire property. So it wouldn't be a backup to your backup to your backup.
Second question. You said we're able to expand the application here to exceed two?
Megawatts.
Okay. Correct me if I'm wrong. My memory isn't good, but did you suggest a meeting before that to produce more than that is not maximize your efficiencies or?
No, because you're still only at 73% of your annual consumption. So you're not above what you're consuming here, and that number, let's be honest, is going to continue to rise each year. It's not going to go down. We're keeping it flat, but you're still, you still have room to grow. We believe we've maximized what we can for the simplest, most inexpensive installation. You have more ground than was available, but we were really going to be running through a lot of problems trying to not only get it approved through the village and the county, but also just with the way that it is set up in that retention basin. You need the, you need the grass, you need the growth, you need all that to keep the drainage proper. It still works with the solar, but it's more difficult, and you really have to get it above, plus the installation was going to be difficult, because that's a swampy area, so getting, you know, being able to put the poles in, it made sense to move it, so we did. And over 2 megawatts, it's per, even though it's one campus, it's per-location, so to stay under the SREC requirements, it's under 2 megawatts per location. So the ground could be two, and the roof could be two. They just can't be over two to get all the SRECs. So this requires the roof rebuilt all here, too? Is that?
Yes.
The roof needs to be done here. Or 4 million, or whatever it is, or 2, 3.8, or? In the very, very near future, no matter whether you do solar or not. Hey, we have buckets, you know. Yeah, I do, I do remember. So that was, I believe, something that was on the horizon. This would obviously speed it up, and our intent would be to do the roof before we actually did the solar installation, but it makes the most sense, because the solar would help offset the cost of the roof work. This is just for Stern School, not for Almond, right? I, that is just Stern School. I have all the other information.
Almond is loaded in Board Docs. One last thing I'm going to add. I've given you a document from the IPA, which is the Illinois Power Authority, and it was a document done in December 2017. On page 152, it talks about the money that's available for '17, '18, '18, '19, '19, '20, and '20, '21, four years. So if, document, you might reference that page, it talks about, you know, really how the funding is and how much money is available to nonprofits, which is a certain percentage of the pie.
Yeah. The IPA is looking at schools as something that, one, they haven't done it until we brought it to them. They weren't even looking at schools, and so their carve-out for schools was so small. Most of their work was done with, you know, corporate and then residential, and so they, even in the last two, two and a half years, they've brought a lot of new things to us in terms of what we can do for districts, and this was one of them. But of that 178 pages, which my engineer read, I did not, there was about three pages that had to do with public schools and public entities.
January 18th, is the Solar and Renewable Energy Forum at Wabansy, so if anybody's interested, I've got the information. It's 1:30 to, 1 to 3:30, January 18th, so this Thursday. Kurt?
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
And thanks. Oh, we have a question from Mr. Carl.
Can I address the Board briefly? The only, first of all, I was looking at, I'm very in support of the first, I'm very glad to hear it's going to be planned, and I'm, however, I'm concerned, I have no idea about how this is going to be.
But of that hundred and seventy-eight pages, which my engineer read, I did not, um, there was about three pages that had to do with public schools and public entities.
January eighteenth, uh, is the Solar and Renewable Energy Forum at Wabansy. So if anybody's interested, I've got the information. It's, uh, one-thirty to.
When is it?
One to three-thirty, January eighteenth, so this Thursday.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for having me.
And thanks. Oh, we have a question from Mr. Cross.
Can I address the board briefly? The only, first of all, last question is very important. First, I'm very glad to hear from you, and I'm glad to have you on the board. However, with the seventy acres, I have no idea about how this would be received. I would encourage before this board makes any significant decision that there be a good deal of interplay between this gentleman and the gentleman in the county to make sure that you guys don't try to do something that the county board is willing to do and not lose a fight like that. So we can work on it as events to go on the back end.
Talked about the acreage. How much acreage would we have to put up over all of our electrical needs approximately?
A, a fraction of that. I mean, yeah.
Because we're, we're talking maybe a couple acres?
This was what was sent.
Because I, I understand your concern, Steve, that when we've been having conversations.
I don't want to get set up and have the whole committee go, are you nuts?
I mean, we could probably with seventy acres.
One area of those, one of those would cover, more than cover your usage.
Because seventy, seventy acres, we could probably light up Lake County.
We're not looking to light up Lake County. We're just looking to offset. So I hear what you're saying, um, in the scope of the project, but we're probably looking at a couple of acres tops.
Have to get a hundred percent, yeah.
One of the things that I think would guide our decision is the cost and financial return on all of this, right? So I don't think we would choose to build out there if building on our campus here could cover seventy-three percent of our bills on land that will never get used for anything else. We already own it, it's paid for, right? So what I still don't, can't visualize is a prioritized approach to almond ground, almond roof, O'Plane ground, which maybe is not in play now, O'Plane roof, and then Stern School, based on a financial rate of return of our investment and payback. I don't have that picture in front of me yet. I, I have not seen that.
Right, we were, you know, we were talking earlier, things come up, you know, we, we took a piece of property, we're pretty, pretty well landlocked here. We don't know what futures operating conditions may be on this building. We already moved our track from the other, the other facility over here. Um, you know, when we put it in the turf synthetic field, we moved the track over. So those things come up, I think we just need to be very careful that we don't put pieces in place that are going to prevent us from doing things in the future when we have an opportunity to take a look at this property that eventually is going to be paid off, is going to be owned by, by the district, uh, where we can continue and grow and develop in one place. And when you grow and develop in one place, you have limited costs when you have to start talking about transformers hooking to the grid. Um, you also start talking about, you know, and it's no hidden piece. I mean, I don't like putting things on the roof. I just, that's not something that I think is a good idea. And then we start.
But it's proven. But it's proven.
It is. But we're going to spend, we're going to spend how much to replace the roof?
Over four million.
Three point eight million.
Three point eight million to put a brand-new roof on it and then we're going to stick solar panels up on top.
It's gone everywhere.
Which will lengthen the life of the roof by covering it from the sun.
True, true. But it also then causes problems when that, when that snow melts off of those solar panels because those solar, solar panels are generating heat, which then turns to liquid, which then turns to ice, which then causes freezing on your roofs and causes problems. And that happens everywhere. And I don't know why we would want to take a risk. And we have a, a better return on our investment when we put them on ground mounts. Correct me if I'm wrong, but you're, you get more.
Production.
You get more production by a ground mount because you can tilt them at a different angle. So those are all very logical pieces that I think lead to putting them on the ground.
Okay. I think what we'd want to include, just to address some of your concerns, if there is additional cost for putting things on roof, which is a proven way to install them, that's what needs to be included in this financial cost and rate of return. The other thing I think that's changed when we talk about ground mounts here is last time we had this conversation, we were talking about utilizing parts of our campus that weren't buildable for anything else. So that was kind of what we talked about last time. If now we're talking about putting it in locations that could be candidates for expansion of buildings later, I agree. That's a different conversation. Last time we talked about mounting these in locations that we couldn't build in.
Yeah, I don't know if you would be building next to the, it's literally the piece of property is directly next to the, uh, the, the retainage base, the retainage base and just outside the, uh, the building, right next to the soccer field. It's not built big enough for soccer field. I mean, the, the space, I have a picture here if you want to see it. I think it, it should, it might be in your, uh, report as well, but.
So I'm going to suggest for your first topic of discussion.
Okay.
Solar locations.
No, I'm going to remind the board that we did at one point in time on our list of committees, one of our board committees was an alternative energy committee because it would give all board members that are interested, and in this case, it looks like there's many, the opportunity to talk about it at length. So I don't know if that's still of interest to the board, to schedule a committee meeting and really get into it and allow.
It is. There's a lot of information we've got on the table. I think we need to assemble this and build kind of a, a plan that maximizes the amount of investment and return and pulls in the Stern School. What are all those options? I, I don't think we would, I'm, I'm going to speculate here. I don't think we'd start by building a seventy-acre field. That probably doesn't sound like where you'd start. We could start small.
I don't think the county would probably let us.
We could start small and, and build into this over, you know, and build that over time. But, so, yeah, I, I agree. We.
Would you, would the board be open to do it before our next board meeting, February thirteenth? Is that a, we've, I don't think we have anything scheduled at that time, so tentatively, we can look at that just.
Sure.
Sound good?
Just to clarify to Mr. Drake, those were, um, kind of what you could maximize for that space. You could take a fraction of any area. There's a northwest side, there's a south, there's a, a main area as well, and that would cover, um, so you, you would not have to start and probably wouldn't want to start with a seventy-acre, uh, uh, field. And thirty megawatts is a enormous amount of solar. But a five-megawatt system would probably, you know, five or six megawatts would probably cover all of your, uh, your issues at both campuses.
And Grayslake and Lindenhurst and?
Both Grayslakes have their, have theirs now, so.
Do they have any on the roof?
They do, they do. Grayslake High School has both high schools and a ground, and Grayslake Elementary District just, uh, approved in, um, September, a two, two roofs and two grounds.
How'd those panels do when those straight winds came through?
No problems on that. I will tell you that we, with the, the night snow that we had and, and the heavy snow, um, that some of the panels had some snow on them because they weren't able to, uh, to heat up because it snowed so heavily at night. But otherwise, no issues whatsoever with any of the actual panels movement, wind, anything.
Any instances, counselor?
My ten minutes is up. Never ask a question you don't know the answer to.
Well, I'm pretty confident. Did I ever, any stories? I haven't heard any stories about any issues with any applications on a roof. Have you heard of any issues with any solar panels on a roof?
I, I haven't either. Um, we've, we've been using Libertyville for the most because they've had it the longest. They haven't gone up there, they haven't had any issues. In fact, again, they had better insulation in their building, um, and better heat and cooling in the summer and winter because the panels are up there, uh, helping them out. I completely understand what you're saying, but we look.
I don't understand. I don't understand.
No, no, no. But, well, drainage and ice and stuff, but we, we put up guards when we need to, we look at the drains, make sure, I mean, there are issues, there are things that we put in place to make sure that these, uh, issues wouldn't occur. That is part of the installation, but I.
Have you had any issues with ground mounts?
We haven't had any issue. Knock on wood, we haven't had. The only issues we've had in any installations is.
Okay, let's, let's officially admit it's a worldwide technology that works, okay? Can we go with that?
So I, I have one last question. So for the board, who's leading that committee? Who did we designate? We, we listed it out and I think it was Jim. Are you going to take the lead on setting up a, a committee meeting? Okay. Do you know who's on it other than you?
I'm, I'm happy.
By a raise of hands?
I'm happy to talk to anybody on staff or.
I know every, there's a lot of passion, but let's move it forward, right?
Yeah, we need to gather all the information in one spot. And I think that the other thing, the other piece that we haven't, I don't know, maybe you figured that into this thing, but you have to put an entrance onto that Stern School property too, which is going to cost you a lot of money to, to put a road entrance, which isn't there now. You might have to have a stoplight, you might have to have this, right, Steve? There you go. So I mean, that could cost you a million bucks right there.
So our first step before the road, our first step's having a meeting. And Jim, you're going to take the lead on scheduling that. You'll reach out to the people that you want in that discussion. All right.
No, you're coming, you're coming along. I'm dragging, I'm dragging.
Mr. Anti-roof guy.
Next item on the agenda is the department report. Thanks, Kurt.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Kurt.
Way over your ten minutes, Kurt.
All right, Chris.
You can see things haven't changed.
That means you've got five, Chris.
I'll do my best to get it done. Well, I am here to talk about, uh, our two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, uh, English learner department. So just to kind of highlight what I was going to share with you guys tonight was, uh, some of, some information about our enrollment trends with our English learners in, in our district, share our current staffing, or the teachers that we have working with our English, uh, or what our current course offerings are. Uh, just kind of refresh a little bit. A couple of years ago, I talked about some of the programmatic changes that we were looking at implementing with our English learners to, uh, help our students be more successful and review some of the initial data from our first two years of implementation in terms of how we've been able to impact student learning. And then talk a little bit about our focus on continuous improvement, how we're going to continue to support our students, our parents, and our, our teachers that are working with the, our, that student population. So our enrollment trends over time, so going back to, uh, third, two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, we had fifty-two English learners in the district. Uh, if you look, follow that down to this year, we have fifty-one students at Almond who are considered English learners. So we have almost quadrupled in that very short period of time. Uh, if you look, we are actually up about fifty-two students from last year. And even at O'Plane, we have as many student, English learners at O'Plane this year as we had in the entire district a year ago. So our English learner program, our, our English learner population is exploding. Uh, and a lot of that is, there's a lot of factors in that. There's a lot of high mobility in that, in that student population. This was the year or two, we had a lot of transfers in. Uh, so there's, there's not a, really a great way for us to predict, like, I can't say, well, next year, we're going to be at this number, uh, because there's, there's a lot of factors into that. But I did want to show that, uh, we are seeing a significant increase over time in our English learner population. So our staffing, currently, right now, we have two full-time, uh, English learner teachers that teach, uh, English content. Uh, we have four teachers that teach part-time, uh, one in math, two in science, uh, and two in social studies. Um, oh, sorry, not, not, not teachers, but sections. We have one EL section of math, two EL sections in our science department at O'Plane, and two, uh, EL sections in social studies at our O'Plane campus. Uh, we have three teachers that work with our bilingual aid-supported classes. So we have some, uh, gen ed, uh, general college prep level courses, uh, that we have our English learners in with a bilingual aid to support them in those classes. Uh, and then we have one bilingual aid on staff as she works at the O'Plane campus. Our course offerings, so just kind of going through year to year to year, freshmen, they have sheltered English reading, algebra, Western civilizations. Beginning next year, one of our health teachers this year, she is working with our bilingual aid. She is enjoying the experience and decided to go back to get her master's, uh, in the ESL and get her ESL endorsement. Uh, so as a result of that, next year, we will be able to offer sheltered health, uh, because we'll have a certified teacher in that area. And we also have an advisory, it's a non-credit-bearing course that we offer for our special, uh, our EL students who are also in special education. This is an added support, uh, for their, that half-period that they have opposite their lunch, so we can provide them some more targeted language instruction opposite their lunch period. Uh, sophomores have sheltered English and reading. Uh, they have, uh, ELL literacy course. That is, uh, an English credit-bearing course. Uh, it's also, they work on literacy skills across content areas. Uh, when we implemented our, our change with, uh, bringing the bilingual aid in and being able to offer more shelter courses at the freshman level, we were able to start focusing that ELL literacy course specifically on sophomore core content area classes. So in that ELL literacy course, they are focusing on reading and writing skills in math, science, and social studies. So they're getting additional support. And then also that bilingual aid is supporting those same students in their social studies and science courses, uh, specifically chemistry, government, and economics. Junior year, uh, we offer, this year, we began offering sheltered English III because as our shelter, as our ELL population grew, we have to now offer more coursework for those students at, uh, junior and senior level. So ESL sheltered English III, ELL literacy, we're offering again over here. So that ELL literacy course is obviously focusing on support in their junior-level courses. And then seniors, beginning next year, we'll be offering sheltered English IV at the scene, at the senior level. Oops, sorry, I went back. Um, and then all levels, ELL English and ELL literature, that is our newcomer program. So what that is, that is, uh, when students come to us, if they're new to the country, if their English skills are, are at a low level, those are, uh, are very, our lowest level, uh, English courses where they're building their English skills, then we would want to get them into the sheltered courses and move them towards exiting the program. And then to exit, just as a reminder, exiting the, to, in order to exit, uh, an EL program, the student needs to score a four-point-eight composite score on the access test, which we're actually starting on Thursday this week. Uh, so some of the changes that we made, uh, we implemented last year, it was our first year with these changes, we began offering sheltered instruction with algebra, biology, and Western civilizations at the freshman level. Our bilingual aid position, uh, was added to address the sophomore core classes of science and West, uh, science, chemistry, and government economics. And then also, uh, this year, we have her, because we, the way the schedule worked out, we had an extra period, so she's supporting in, uh, some of our health classes as well this year. ELL literacy is focusing on sophomore classes and, um, like, as I mentioned, the freshman EL sped advisory period. So what we want, what I wanted to look, share with you is some of the impact that that's had on student learn, learning. So what I went back and took a look at is how did our students perform in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen? So the year before, we implemented these changes to where we're at currently. How did our students perform? Looking at grade data. So, and so since we're looking at the same period of time, we're looking at first semester grade data. So what I, what jumped off right away is if I pull all of our EL students who are across the district, in their first semester GPA, the average GPA for first semester in twenty fifteen, sixteen was two-point-one-one. This year was a two-point-four-two. So a point-three increase. So that's going from like a C minus to almost a C plus on average. So that's a huge, uh, statistical change. Uh, freshmen, looking just at the freshmen, because the freshmen and sophomores were implemented a lot of these, uh, programmatic improvements, really focused on the freshman sophomore level with the idea being that's where they need a lot of support as they're coming to Western High School. The freshmen kind of mirrored, mirrored that point-three jump overall. And then the sophomores actually went up a, a large jump, going from a two-point-oh-six average GPA to a two-point-four-four. And that's looking at all their courses, electives, uh, math, science, social studies, English, all their classes together. Uh, but as I talked about, we did a lot of changes within science and social studies. So kind of looking at those, um, taking a look at freshman science. Our student GPA in the freshman sciences, we implemented that sheltered biology course, it went up one-point-one-four. So that's more than a full letter grade of improvement by those students. Still, it's, uh, still working with the biology course, course content, but also focusing on supporting them in their academic language, uh, development. Freshman social studies, similar result. Average student increase, student performance increase of one-point-zero-six. So again, both situations, seeing students improve by more than a full letter grade in their academic performance. In the sophomore science, and this is what I think is really important to highlight here, is we went from eight students to thirty-two students at grade level and then at the sophomore level. So we have, we went from eight kids, students in chemistry to thirty-two students in chemistry and their GPA improved. So and their su, their, their success rate improved by, again, almost a third of a letter grade, or actually, more than a third of a letter grade. In sophomore social studies, we went from nine to thirty-five students at grade level in sophomore social studies. And the benefits of that is since they're at grade level, they're completing more of their graduation requirements, they're opening more opportunities for them to take different types of courses. When they come to the, uh, the Almond campus, they can continue in science, they can continue in social studies. They don't have to worry about retaking credits, which might take away an opportunity to participate at tech campus. So they have more opportunities for electives because they are on, they're on pace for graduation. So that was looking at two separate groups. What I also wanted to share with you is some cohort data. So looking at that cohort of students that were freshmen in FY '16. So they had their freshman year without these new supports and the sophomore year with support, or with the additional support. So we saw an average increase in science. Again, the point is referring to a GPA calculation. So we saw an average increase in science from .8 from grade nine to grade 10. So those students, again, did almost a full letter grade better when we added that bilingual aid support in there for them. And the social studies average, it went up by a letter grade and a third. So like a C to a B+. It would be kind of that type of comparison. Freshmen that were la, last year's freshmen, so it was freshmen that were, they've received this new programmatic change, the whole, they've received these, these new services throughout their academic career here. We don't see as large of a jump. But the important piece to that is we had greater student success rates. Students did better freshman year to sophomore year with those supports. So we don't see this huge, this large jump in GPA because they were more successful initially, but they still got better, which is the important thing there. And we're seeing higher student success rates overall. And then similar in social studies. So how we're continuing to support our students, we added Sheltered English Instruction here at the Almond campus beginning this year, and we're adding Sheltered English IV next year. We've added after-school tutoring every Tuesday. There's tutoring in the core, across all the core subject areas. Our bilingual aid is at all of those tutoring sessions, so if students need additional language support, she's there to work with them. She's phenomenal. She works so well with our kids. They all know her, they all go to her for help. She does, she does an absolutely fantastic job with them. Summer school tuition for our EL students, so we have some EL-specific courses that we offer during summer school. But also, if there is a case where a student does need to re-credit, we can look at using our EL grants to help pay for their summer school, so our EL students do not have to pay for summer school. How we're supporting our parents, this year, our theme is innovation. We're looking at how can we innovate our bilingual parent committee activities? We want to begin to create more of a sense of community. We want to make sure that our parents are engaging with that. So we are, some of our AVAZA students, which is our Future Latino Leaders Club, they are providing childcare to our parents that come. We are working with teachers and with parents to develop agendas for those meetings that are addressing, addressing content that are topics that are important to them and important to their families. Things like getting ready for college. We talked to, we had our, two of our teachers who are former EL students themselves went to our last meeting to talk about their experiences as EL students and what they learned from it and how that's been an asset for them in their lives. And then they also talked about some of the activities we have for some of our Hispanic students. Like our AVAZA club is doing the Pasada event the next, two nights later. And three of the four families came to that Pasada event. So we're looking to build that sense of community. We're looking to increase participation. We want to increase the accessibility for it, making sure that we, people are aware of childcare, aware that we're making it easier for them to attend. And we want to get our teachers more involved, so they're starting to see some more familiar faces at those meetings. We are increasing communication regarding important events. We've added money in our grant to help increase, provide time for our bilingual aid to contact parents. When there's our communal college night, our bilingual college night, our parents can, will call home, let them know that that's coming up, will let them know what open house is. So we're able to increase those communications, so those parents can more easily participate in those events. And we are, again, utilizing our bilingual aid and our bilingual secretaries to help us increase our communication regarding academic progress with our parents and families. Supporting our teachers, our bilingual aid this year is in government, economics, chemistry, health. And then the way the schedule worked out, she actually has a period where she is splitting time between Sheltered Biology and Sheltered Western Civilizations. So that deposition has been incredibly useful for us and incredibly beneficial for our students and our teachers as they work with this populated student population. A formation of an EL PLT, we, since we have all these teachers working together now, we wanted to provide them the opportunity to collaborate that we provide to everybody else. So this year, we formed a PLT that meets quarterly. And these teachers all teach our shelter classes, our bilingual aid-supported classes. They focus on instructional strategies that are specifically targeting developing academic language. And they meet, this year we're meeting five times at O'Plane. So our Almond teachers will go over to O'Plane, there's a little bit of overlap time there. And we want them to have that opportunity to collaborate. We're collaborating with Zion Betman. We met with them last year. We're going to be meeting with them again. This year, I'll talk a little bit more about what that's about in the next slide. And then professional development opportunities, we provide opportunities to our grants to go to statewide conferences, send people to NESHO, which is a Northern Illinois native speaker educator conference. And the IRC, which is the Almond Resource Center, which is an organization dedicated specifically to teaching English learners. Access. So the access is the test that students have to take to exit the EL. Access is undergone a huge change in the last couple of years. It's moved online. They've renormed it. So that's, it's changed, it's changed how they scored it. So this year, we wanted, as an EL PLT, we wanted to look at what the access test is. So we began the year by taking a practice test together in August to learn what that experience is like. And then the teachers agreed after taking that, they wanted to collaborate on instructional strategies to help prepare students to succeed on access. So how can they incorporate those access-aligned tasks into their daily coursework, into their assessments, to help students build the skills they need to exit the, exit ELL. So they've, they've been working on that, they've been sharing those activities, they've been sharing their lessons. And that's where we're going to work with Zion. Zion is focusing on a similar thing this year. So when we get together with Zion later in February, they're going to work together to develop access-aligned assessments and share strategies with their colleagues from Zion Betman High School. So moving forward, we want to continue to focus our efforts on improving EL students' success rates. We like the trend that we're on. We are thrilled with it, but we're not satisfied with it. We want to continue to serve our students better. And we're going to do that through collaboration and research and continually evaluating the work that we're doing. We want to continue to work with our students, our parents, our teachers, and make, ensure that everyone's needs are being met. We want to make sure that students are able to learn, parents are feeling supported, and our teachers are feeling supported as they work with our students. We want to continue to support teacher collaboration inside and outside the district. We have a lot to learn from each other, but we also have a lot to learn from the other educators in our area. We're all working with, working through similar issues. We all support one another and learn from one another. So we want to continue those efforts. We want to continue to increase the amount of staff with ESL endorsements. We share information as we get it about ESL endorsement programs that are coming up. When we're, when we're interviewing people, we ask them if they have that. We've included that in job postings that we prefer ESL endorsements, just to try and continue to increase the number of teachers that we have that qualify to work with those ESL students. And we want to continually utilize data to evaluate the effectiveness of our program. So, and we're doing all of these things, we need to make sure that we're looking at our data to make sure that what we're doing is effective.
Any questions?
Impressive. Results are impressive.
Thank you. And that's, that's the work of the teachers. They have done an amazing job. And the program's grown, the number of kids have grown. They've been incredibly collaborative, flexible, and have had fantastic ideas to continually help make our programs better.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Chris.
Okay, we'll move, move into new business. Next item. Approval of the 2018-2019 public school calendar. Think it was pretty straightforward. Any questions?
I move to approve the 2018-19 public school calendar as presented.
Roll call.
Motion by Munda, second by Wilson. Mr. Walls?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Munda?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Seven yes. Motion carries.
Next item, approval of the 2018-19 school board meeting schedule.
Move to approve the proposed 2018-2019 school board meeting schedule as presented.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Walls, second by Schultz. Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Munda?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Walls?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Seven yes. Motion carries.
Next item is approval to begin the budgeting process for the 2018-2019 school year.
The Illinois School Code requires that the Board of Education designate some person or persons to prepare, prepare the tentative budget. We are asking the Board of Education to officially authorize the superintendent and the chief school business official to begin development of the 18-19 fiscal year budget. Copy of the resolution is attached for your review and board signature. Any questions?
Standard, right. I move to approve to begin the budget for 2018-2019 school year.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Drake, second by Munda. Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Walls?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Munda?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Seven yes. Motion carries.
Next item, authorization to close some of the inactivity, student activity accounts, inactive accounts.
I'll be.
Go ahead.
This is a recurring already item, and we've identified accounts that have either been inactive for a year or are not currently in use. So that list is attached for your review and your action.
Move to close inactive student activity accounts as presented.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Drake, second by Conway. Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Munda?
Yes.
Mr. Walls?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
And Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Seven yes. Motion carries.
Next item is approval of the board scholarships for 2018.
So the Illinois Administrative Code allows the board to use those funds in a variety of manner, manners, including designating those as Board of Education scholarships, which the board has done for many years. The available amount of funds would be $1,564.55. So the board could decide on an amount and either let the guidance counselors break that up, or you could determine the amount of scholarships and how many you would like to give out.
We typically like, like in this case, round it at the 1,500, leave 60 bucks in there, that kind of thing?
Yes.
Okay. Five, three at five, or five at three? I'm a math whiz.
I move to approve the board distributed $1,500 in Board of Education scholarships as presented.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Drake, second by Anderson. Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Walls?
Yes.
Mr. Munda?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
And Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Seven yes. Motion carries.
Approval of the payment of the bills for January 16th.
I'll move to approve the payment of bills for 1/16, 2018, in the amount of $1,315,000.75.
Second. Roll call.
Motion by Munda, second by Walls. Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yeah.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Walls?
Yes.
Mr. Munda?
Yes.
And Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Seven yes. Motion carries.
Next item is approval of reviewing of closed session minutes from January 17th, 2017 through June 27th of 2017. I'll, I'll go ahead, I'll do it. So I move, keep me honest on the dates here, everyone.
Yep.
I move to keep the executive session minutes closed for January 17th, 2017, February 7th, 2017, February 21st, 2017, February 28th, 2017, March 21st, 2017, April 11th, 2017, April 25th, 2017. April 25th is written twice. Nope, April 25th, 2017 at 7:00 PM. April 25th, 2017 at 8:32 PM. May 9th at 20, May 9th, 2017, May 12th, 2017, May 23rd, 2017, June 13th, 2017, and June 27th, 2017.
Second.
Roll call.
Walls?
Yes.
Mr. Munda?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson? Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
And Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Seven yes. Motion carries.
Okay, next item is approval of our meeting minutes, executive minutes from December 19th.
I move to approve the regular meeting minutes and executive session minutes of December 19th, 2017.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Anderson, second by Munda. Mr. Walls?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Munda?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Seven yes. Motion carries.
Okay, the last one is the approval of hiring recommendations. So I'm going to amend this because we've got a couple additional ones. This is the one agenda item we changed tonight. So I move to approve Exhibit A Hiring Recommendation Numbers 113 through 132 as posted. And the additional items posting number 133, Diala Brown for Dean of Students O'Plane, 134, Yolanda Fulton, Supervisory Dean of Students Almond, and 135, Amy Lannagro, thank you, Assistant Athletic and Activities Director.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Drake and second by Conway. Mr. Walls?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yeah.
Mr. Munda?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
And Mr. Drake?
Yes.
I have seven yes. Motion carries.
Done.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Board of Education. Before we adjourn, I wanted to make sure that everybody who came tonight, and a lot of you, thanks so much for your patience tonight. We have a very special meeting. We've, we're in the second year on our strategic plan of our administrative transition. And part of that has to do with, we've been going through a lot of interviewing and meeting some new, new faces and faces that are returning to Warren, because we have transitions happening to, to retirements. And we've gotten a chance to reorganize a bit. And it's really a special group of people that were, the board approved as part of our recommendations this evening. As part of that this evening, I wanted to make sure that for those of you that saw names on papers or heard names here tonight, that you're at least able to put face to a name for this evening and to get, get to know who was hired this evening in terms of our administrative staff before we adjourn. After the meeting, by the way, I think there's a couple of cookies and some hot chocolate, thank you, Mr. Post, out in the hallway. But we do want to make sure, although it's fairly quick, we want to make sure you also realize how special this is to welcome members to our leadership team. And I'm going to start this process by bringing up Chris. And I want you all to know that we, this is probably, Chris was probably one of the first ones that we recognized through email. I mean, after I say one, one sentence about him, I'm going to have him be congratulated by the board for sure. But next year, Chris is obviously replacing Willie. They've worked together a long time. And Chris, in his role as assistant principal, has done an exceptional job. And we're really looking forward to, obviously, show tonight his use of data and analyzing our programming, as well as his technology skills. So please help me congratulate Chris Gilcarri. A new face to Warren.
We try to control them, it's difficult.
A new face to Warren, very pleased. Obviously, with Carol's retirement at the end of the year, this was an extremely important search for our administrative team, as well as our board. We are very pleased to come across Michael Engel as he sent his credentials into the district. He's been a CFO for nine or 10 years, most recently in District 167. Very bright, quick learner, we know that. And he's very anxious to join our leadership team. And he's, we're very happy tonight that he's joined by his wife Lisa. Please help me congratulate Michael.
So we're just going to apologize right in front of Lisa, okay? We're sorry.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard. Yeah, here you go. Take this one and study it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Principal, we're told to be Principal, we're told, this is my last one, I'm going to turn it over.
Principal McGrove Farm.
So for those of you that, and obviously, a lot of us were in interview panels together, which is, it's interesting to see people rejoin a little bit. But for those of you that have seen Michelle's work in the district, I think all of us who work with her would say, in terms of instructional leadership and being a lifelong learner, nobody exemplifies that in the district any greater than Michelle. And obviously, with Greg's retirement this year, we knew those were big shoes to fill. But absolutely, I think we all have a whole lot of confidence that Michelle's going to do a great job next year as Principal of O'Plane.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Next set of hires, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Keely, and he's going to go through a couple more. a couple more.
Dr. Augrum said one sentence, so since he didn't hold to that, I will. First, I'd like to introduce Becky Belmont as our athletic director. For those of you who by chance don't know her, Becky has been with us for twenty-three years, the last fifteen of which have been in a leadership position and dean of students. You'd be hard pressed to find one person in either building that doesn't respect Becky as a leader, but more importantly, to me, as a person. I reelect for her leadership in the athletic office for years to come. Okay, next we have Amy Lannagro, who will be our assistant athletic director and activities director. We are very fortunate to have Amy, kind of the athletic piece. She coached a team to the state championship that didn't have one senior on the team, which was an impressive feat as a coach. She has served as dean of students, she has served six years as an activity director and nine years as an assistant athletic director. We believe that variety of experience will provide a great partnership with Ms. Belmont as they move the athletic, athletic office through this time of transition. So we are very fortunate to have Amy Lannagro as our assistant athletic and activity director.
Mr. Meyer, if you would please step to the mic.
Is this your retirement speech, too?
Uh, no.
Okay.
No. I've been more than happy to go blind.
No, sir, just asking.
Well, we have a dean's position that, that opened up at, at semester, and if you want to come up, Deb Perry. Graduate of Northeastern Illinois, she has been a teacher in our district, teaching physical education and our sports medicines classes, and for some of you that have worked on the strategic plan, you would recognize her face, she, she did a lot of work on our strategic plan with us, and though she is not an official member of our professional development or in-service committee, she has spent some time working with us in, in that capacity. She's currently working in our building, has been there since January eighth, even though she just got approved tonight, I don't know if I'm telling on anybody.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
But she is, she is being helped and managed by Sandy Ricker and Pat Shea at this time, so, Deb Perry, if you could welcome her.
Michelle, if you want to come up and introduce the rest of our new hires.
Sure. I'm really excited, I'll, I'll keep going with the dean. I'm really excited to introduce Diallo Brown. Diallo, come on up. Diallo comes to us with an English teaching background and also a range of administrative experience, and particularly strong in student services, in a range of, of ages as well, working with elementary through college-level students. So we're getting a lot of experience, and, and to top it off, he's already part of our Warren family, he has three, three children, Asha's currently a freshman. In fact, actually, could the whole family stand up? He has two sons that are going to be coming through Warren, and his wife, do you want to introduce your family?
Sure, my, my lovely wife, Kalila Brown, my youngest, Noah Telly, who is a fifth grader at Prairie Trail, my mid-kid, Khalil Telly, who is a seventh grader at Viking, and Warren's twenty-twenty, soon cum, cum laude valedictorian, Asha.
No pressure, no pressure.
So, welcome, we're so happy to have you part of our team. And he's a graduate, yes, how could I forget that? To the left.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Love the walk, guys.
We won't hold back against.
Okay, next I'd like to introduce Peter Cup, Cupper, come on up. He's our assistant principal of curriculum instruction. Peter comes from, he's a physics teacher at Hertz, so he's a teaching background in science. He comes to us from Huntley, he's experienced in unit district overseeing a variety of curriculums in math, physics, or math, science, stems, and working with other departments as well. So he brings great experience, especially in that vertical alignment piece, and also a very strong technology background, so we're really excited to have Peter on our team as well.
You'd like the dean minutes?
Yeah.
Congratulations.
I got a committee for you, my friend.
Welcome to the family.
Stay away from Jim.
Are you guys done with him? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Turner. The last couple of administrative hires, Laura and I are happy to have join our team at the Alma campus. If I can have Yolanda Fulton step forward here. Yolanda will be a dean of students at our Alma campus, congratulations. She comes to us with extensive background, about twenty years in education, spent eight years up in Zion, and has spent the last year and a half, but it will be two years when she finishes her year, over at Woodland, currently working with students as a dean assistant principal role there, so we're excited to have her join our team and work with our students here at the Alma campus, so please welcome Yolanda. And last but not least, if I can welcome Matt Jones, if he can come forward, Matt? Matt will be, Matt will be assistant principal for curriculum instruction here at the Alma campus. I think we've often said, once a blue devil, always a blue devil, we welcome Matt back, a former Spanish teacher, the Oak Lane campus lead teacher in Spanish, left us for a little bit, but knows, knows the real thing here, so convinced him to come back. Lost a bat, right? But spent some time as foreign language chairperson at L.A., and most recently actually moved over into a dean's role, and also doing some interim assistant principal work there, just a unique situation where they had a assistant principal out, so he's actually gotten a little bit of experience in the assistant principal role, so we'd like to welcome him, and probably more importantly, his wife Emily is here as well, so welcome that. Congratulations. Welcome back, congratulations. Thank you. Welcome back. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. I think I might owe somebody a favor. Is that it? Thank you, board.
Great, thank you, that was, that was awesome. So, we are ready to adjourn.
I'm going to adjourn the meeting.
Second. Roll call.
Motion by Mundah, second by Drake.[1784.33]